Good evening. Welcome to the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting, held at Grandview Elementary. This is Tuesday, January 15th, 2013. And I guess our first item to work with... Oh, thank you. Is that better?
Yes.
Did you say no?
Yeah.
Hi, Steve. Testing.
Good.
Okay. Thank you. So our first item on the agenda this evening will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Carl, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I don't think I can do that.
The kids, the kids are saying. The kids do the pledge.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. Sorry, Carl. The kids will be doing that.
Just go up deep, little one.
Yes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the next item on our agenda this evening is the oath of office for newly-elected board members, and that will be handled by Judge Butch.
Thank you. Where would you like for me to... Right here?
We'll have the TV camera beside us. Over there by the podium?
Yep.
I don't have any family here.
Go ahead. You can be a new family member.
Carl, Ron, do you want to...
What's your name?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States... The Constitution of the State of Indiana. And that I will faithfully, honestly, and fairly discharge my duties as a member of the School Board of Fayette County, Indiana. For the best of my ability, so help me God, congratulations.
Can the public still be able to believe and come back?
No, that's why we're meeting.
It should only take about a minute.
Yeah, they don't even think, right?
No.
We've been given a lot of information, so let's just ask what we have to mention.
All right. It's official. Congratulations. Thank you.
At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I move the agenda to submit.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, the election of school board officers. And at this... I'm sorry?
You don't want to do this.
Oh. Okay. Well, let's have a vote on that motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I believe the ayes have it. And now we can move on to the election of the school board officers. And at this point, I would entertain nomination from the board.
Mr. Vice President, I would propose the following officers for president for the coming school year: Ralph Burchett, Vice President; Warren Taylor; Secretary Laurie Savoy; Assistant Secretary Ron Spurlock.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do we have a second to that nomination for slate of officers?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Is there any discussion? This time we'll have a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Jones, and congratulations to the new officers.
I move adjourned.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Good evening and welcome again. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Finance. And we're... The item on the Board of Finance for this evening is the election of President and Secretary, Investment Review, Review Overall Investment Policy, and then adjournment. So at this point in time, I turn it over to Janie. Oh, okay. Well, do we have nominations from the board for officers? Mr. Hilton?
I nominate Dave Jones for president.
Okay. Do you have a nominee for secretary also? Or do you want to do that separately?
Who's been secretary?
Ralph. What we have done the last few years is the board vice president has served as the chair, and then the assistant secretary has served as the secretary of the Board of Finance, so that would have been Mr. Burchett. This time, the assistant secretary was Mr. Spurlock. How would you like to do that, it's fine. It's pretty prestigious, huh?
I pray he does that.
So would you like to amend your motion, Mr. Hilton? And have nominate Dave as president and Mr. Spurlock as secretary?
I'll move to amend that.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Savoy. We have a second. All those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Congratulations to the new president and secretary of the Board of Finance. And now it's Janie's turn. Item V, Investment Review. Mrs. Kellam Tolle.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. As most of the board members recall, up until two years ago, we were not required to meet annually as a Board of Finance. The state statute was changed, and you were required to meet each year in January after the first Monday and before the 31st. You've taken care of the first item of housekeeping, of naming a president and vice president and secretary. In addition to that, we will review the financial institutions with whom we have money. Those two institutions are Main Source, who carry our regular operating account, and Fifth Third Bank, who was awarded three and a half years ago the opportunity for our investments. All of our investments are in acceptable government instruments, excuse me, which would be bonds or certificates of deposit. Those funds, even though they might be in a certificate of deposit for three years maturity, are able to be redeemed at any point in time without penalty because we are a government entity and a part of this investment group. So in addition to the summary of our bank accounts, Main Source operating, the Fifth Third, our clearing account, those items are summarized, the current holdings and the rates of return are included, and then the current board policy of 7.04 that discusses the depositories of the school corporations, that they're selected in accordance with government regulation, which they are, and that we invest any of our surplus funds, which we do. So if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mrs. Kellam Tolle. Are there any questions for Janie? Okay. Okay, I guess item C is the next on the agenda, Review Overall Investment Policy?
Well, I kind of rolled that all together. And the policy 7.04 is our investment policy.
Well, thank you. Well, that takes us to adjournment. Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Meeting adjourned.
The meeting will come to order. We are now holding a regular meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation. At this time, we'll be having the presentation from Grandview Elementary.
Miss Selecty, I would think she should be... Oh, okay.
Welcome to Grandview Elementary. Our third grade will be performing a Reader Theater titled "A Valentine's Day Mystery." Sit back and enjoy. We're Holly and Dayton. We're twins and best friends. We'll help tell the story from beginning to end.
Talk for sharing hearts and sweets with friends far and near. Talk for giving cards to all Valentine's Day is nearly here.
It was the first day of February. Valentine's Day was soon to be here. Our class will decide to begin planning for a special day.
Our teacher, Ms. Hall, said we had a lot to do to get ready. She said we would do things in class. She said we would give Valentine cards to each other.
Ms. Hall said she was also planning a secret Valentine's Day surprise for us.
We tried to guess what her surprise was.
Is it candy cards?
Is it a new game?
Is it a special Valentine's Day card?
But Ms. Hall just said, "You'll know my surprise by now."
Time for sharing hearts and sweets with friends far and near.
Talk for making our own mailbag. Valentine's Day is nearly here.
One day, Ms. Hall showed us how to turn paper bags into Valentine's Day mailbag. She made one for us to see.
She used a white paper bag and hearts. The hearts were all different sizes and colors. She used glue to put the hearts on the bag.
Ms. Hall used the hearts to make flower shapes.
She used green markers to add green colors.
Ms. Hall turned the bag into a Valentine's Day mailbag.
Ms. Hall gave us some white paper bags. She gave us some hearts of different shapes and colors. She gave us blue. We used blue to put our hearts on our bags. We turned our bags into Valentine's mailbags, too.
Time for sharing hearts and sweets with friends far and near. Talk for making a heart word wall. Valentine's Day is nearly here.
Ms. Hall helped us make a Valentine's Day word wall. We made a chart of all the Valentine's Day words we did.
Our list had words like hearts, flowers, red, pink, white, hearts, candy, and friends.
We wrote these words on cards. We put the hearts on our word wall. Ms. Hall helped us use the words to write Valentine's Day wishes.
Time for sharing hearts and sweets with friends far and near. Talk for writing questions, too. Valentine's Day is nearly here.
Ms. Hall wrote part of a sentence on a chart. She wrote, "My Valentine's Day wish is that..."
Ms. Hall asked each of us to write our own words to finish the sentence.
She told us to draw pictures of our ideas.
My Valentine's Day wish is that I get a lot of Valentine's Day cards.
My Valentine's Day wish is that I get a lot of candy.
My Valentine's Day wish is that I have a lot of fun.
Ms. Hall hung our pictures here on Valentine's Day word wall. Then she wrote this on her chart.
My Valentine's Day wish is that you find a new friend.
Time for sharing hearts and sweets with friends far and near.
Talk for making a glass mailbox. Valentine's Day is nearly here.
Ms. Hall told us we were going to make a great big Valentine's Day mailbox. It would hold all our Valentine's for all our messengers.
First, Ms. Hall helped us cover a big box with napkins. Next, we taped the paper and put it. Then we used glue to put the hearts on the box.
Finally, Ms. Hall cut out a big slot in the top of the box. She said this slot was where we could drop in our set of Valentine's Day cards.
Time for sharing hearts and sweets with friends far and near. The special day of Valentine's, Valentine's Day, is nearly here.
Everyone had a set of Valentine's cards for the whole class. Each Valentine was signed with his name as a friend. That way, we could tell which friend gave us each card.
Each child put its own set of Valentine's Day cards into the big box.
Soon the big box was full to the top.
We could not wait to pass the cards out to each other.
The big day was here. It was time to pass out our cards. Ms. Hall told us to put our mailbags on our desks.
We would use our mailbags to load our cards.
Time for sharing hearts and sweets with friends far and near.
It's time for our Valentine's misters, and special day is here.
We took turns going to the big box and putting out our own set of cards. We passed our Valentine's Day cards out to our friends.
We read our cards. Some cards were pretty, some cards were good. Some cards came with sweet treats. We put all our cards into our mailbags.
Bob was the last one to get his set of cards from the big box.
He noticed there was one more set of cards still in the big box.
These extra cards do not seem to be on the anymore class.
Ms. Hall, you brought in these cards.
Everyone knows how to sign the names of Valentine's Day cards.
But these cards have no names at all.
I cannot tell who sent them.
I cannot tell who should get each one.
This is a Valentine's Day mystery for sure.
Ms. Hall said, "Now it's time for the Valentine's Day surprise. I promised you my surprise to solve your mystery."
Ms. Hall walked to the door and opened it. A new girl walked into the room.
Ms. Hall said, "Class, I'd like to meet Rose." She and her family just moved here. Rose will join our class.
Rose brought those mystery Valentine's cards.
We all came over to welcome Rose.
Rose said she was sorry she did not write our names to the cards.
She did not know yet our names.
Rose said that her others were no one's signed Valentine's Day cards.
They stayed a mystery.
We were so happy to meet Rose and to read her Valentine's. Maybe next year, we will make mystery Valentine's Day cards, too.
Well, now, Ms. Hall reminded us that our Valentine's Day wish had come true. We had a new friend, and we had the best time that day.
Time for sharing hearts and sweets with friends far and near.
It's fun to have friends old and new. It's Valentine's Day, we cheer.
Bailey James.
Georgia Thompson.
Brooke Setoff.
Elise Bottomley.
Brittany Bottomley.
Trinity Rogers.
Madeline Lykins.
Brayden Hunter.
Christian Onka.
Thank you very much for this presentation. Are you finished? Is this...
I think I have one more thing to do.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Hey, thank you very much. No, I didn't. Wow. Thank you.
I don't think our teachers introduced themselves. Mrs. Branson and Mrs. McHenry, our third grade teachers.
At this time, too, parents are welcome to stay, but if you would like to leave, it's okay. We understand, so...
They all have bedtimes. Watch your... Mind your step as you leave. I just had a few words to share, if that's all right.
Sure. Go right ahead.
Since 1993, we have been focused on balanced literacy at the primary grades. And in about 1997, '98, we started talking about balanced literacy at the intermediate grades. Third grade, as you just saw those performers, balanced literacy is still emerging, and Reader's Theater is a significant component of literacy, and it is a piece that is sometimes often overlooked in the hurriedness of getting all those standards in, although it is certainly part of it. I did want to mention to the board, since we get to talk just briefly about data, for years, Grandview, we've been focused on the percentage passing I-Step. That percentage has been... I think I-Step was introduced around 1987 or 1988, long before I ever even moved to Indiana. But since 2006, we have seen a steady trend upward in our percentage passing I-Step. I can't say it's a straight upward line. It's more kind of like jagged, but it is sloping upward. With our focus on the percentage passing, we were With our focus on the percentage passing, we were caught somewhat by surprise in the new, newer, complicated formula of the growth model. But I will tell you, with the acuity data that our teachers look at, not only after their formative assessments, but after the predictives, we are getting some excellent information that we can use to inform instruction. We recently, back in December, took the Acuity Predictive B for both English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. Sixty-one percent of our fourth through sixth graders are showing typical growth or high growth. In math, fifty-eight percent of our fourth through sixth grade students are showing typical or high growth. It's great information to know that good part, but the other piece in that is our teachers also have an idea of those students who are not quite to the point of typical or high growth. And I think it's much better to know that in December than May. And so they continue to utilize acuity resources, tutoring through our Title I program. And we're getting ready to kick off our after-school remediation program. And since we can look at kids more prescriptively, like whether they need, is it a skill deficiency? Or do they have skills, but they're not showing enough growth? We can address both of those groups differently, something that we have not done in the past. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to gather that formative data. It's not something that we've always done or maybe even embraced, but it certainly is helpful now. And we will look forward to greater growth for our individual students. So, thank you for being here tonight and come anytime.
Thank you, Mrs. Slicky, and all of your students and teachers that have done the presentation tonight. Moving on with our agenda, the next thing that we have are patron comments on agenda items. Cindy, do you have any one that's turned in a slip? No, okay. Then moving on to the consent agenda. We will be voting on the approval of the minutes from the regular business meeting of twelve eleven twelve and the special session of twelve twenty twelve. The personnel report, which is retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. Approval of the December two thousand and twelve claims numbers three oh two nine four to three three oh five eight eight. Appointment of the Corporation Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer. Appointment of the School Board Attorney and Professional Services Agreement. List of the Conflict of Interest. Acceptance of a grant from the Campbell Soup Labels for Fayette Central Elementary. Acceptance of donation for purchase of replacement touchpads for the Connersville High School Swimming Pool. Donations were given by the CMS, Connersville Swim Team, Brett Adams, Jay Bernsot, and the Fayette County Foundation. The total donation was three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Acceptance of donation of three hundred units of sable hair artist letting brushes to the CHS Art Department. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda? Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? At this time, a part of that, I'll introduce Kay Rowley, who is the principal at Fayette Central, to talk a little bit about one of the consent items.
I am very excited to come talk to you tonight about a grant that we didn't expect this year, but it's fifty thousand dollars. And it's through Labels for Education. And we have this very nice grandfather that's here with us in the audience tonight, Mr. Gary Coles, right here, and his wife Lynn. And Mr. Cole was online and they had a contest for Labels for Education. And he was the grand prize winner. And so before Christmas, he received about twenty-five hundred dollars' worth of, it was a computer equipment and that type of thing. And then he could designate a school that he would like to choose to get fifty thousand dollars' worth in merchandise. And because his granddaughter Jade is in kindergarten, he chose Fayette Central. So, we're very excited that we have Jade in kindergarten this year. And we are going to be able to get playground equipment. And in case you haven't seen this yet, I'll just pass it around so you can look at it. It's called Thomas, and it's a pretty large playground unit. And if any of you know the cost of playground equipment, that's very hard to get. And so we're really excited that we could add this to our playground. And then we are also getting five SMART boards that are like Eno boards. And those will be placed in primary classrooms. So, I'd really like to thank again, Mr. Cole, for doing this for us. And I just have a.
Okay, moving on to the action items, Personnel Report, Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Birchett, Dr. Hodges, members of the board. We have a few folks for your consideration this evening. First of all, Allison Schrower, a Language Arts Speech and Drama teacher, beginning January seventh, twenty thirteen, at Connersville High School. Also had a teacher who was unable with no obligation prior to the end of the first semester. So, we were able to contact and work with Margie Jaeger, who provided a dual-credit certification class, finishing up that, you see, December the third and December twenty-first. She also, with those students who struggled in that area, is providing a one-period class, second semester, early bird class, January seventh to March twenty-second, to fulfill a need of the students who needed additional assistance. And finally, on your mental report, we have one support staff member, Amanda Fields, is Executive Secretary at FRAZ, effective January thirty-first, twenty thirteen. Those persons for your consideration this evening, Mr. Birchett.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we accept his or? Do I hear a second? Okay, Laura Savoy. A discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. The proposed school calendar, Dr. Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Birchett. The board, in your packet, I provided some information for you in regards to comments that we've received on the calendar. We did have about three hundred and nineteen, I think it was, responses online to preferences people had for the various calendar options that were out there. Overall, about seventy percent of the responders preferred the modified balanced calendar. I can give a breakdown as to the various groups if you'd like to do. We did include comments from various individuals as to the pros and cons of both calendars that we had. Based upon the feedback that we've been given, both by the calendar committee and by the posting that we have online, I would recommend to you that you adopt option two, which we call the Modified Balanced Calendar. And that we also include February the seventeenth as a make-up snow day, as well as April the twenty-first.
Mr. Nelson?
The free fair, as I understand, ends August third, August second or August third. And the first day for staff will be August the fifth, so that will be outside of the free fair.
What school year would this be for, Dr. Hodges?
This coming school year, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
Does that, are the other school corporations, what are their, where are they at in the process?
There are a number of folks that come into the Career Center that I've committed to email them tomorrow to tell them how the vote tonight comes out. Seems like most are leaning this direction. Mr. Emu here, I think he's probably had more comment with some of those folks. But we've talked about it quite a bit at our Superintendent's Board meetings, and this is not unexpected.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Board, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President, I would, I would move, make a motion to approve the school calendar as recommended by Dr. Hodges.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded that we adopt the Modified Balanced Calendar for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school, school year. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have approval of agreement with Spyglass, Jane Kellum-Tolliver.
Thank you, Mr. Birchett. Spyglass is a company that offers to come in and review telecommunications billings. If you can imagine, our Frontier bill is about vestig for all of the phone lines we have. And what they do is they offer the service of auditing, auditing those to find out if there are any inappropriate charges that are being charged to the school, tariffs or fees that we might be exempt from. They do not charge upfront for their service, however, if they find any corrections that are due to us, once we receive the money back from Frontier or another telecommunications provider, we then would pay them a percentage of that as their fee for finding those. In addition to that, one of the best things that Terry Miller and I talked about, when they go through this, they do a full inventory of all of our telephone lines, where they're located, the building and the room that they're in, which we do not currently have. We get this for free, which will help us in planning going forward as a part of this process. The, the, there is an additional step where they will look at lines that we have that they might, we might need or where we have opportunities for future savings. They will make recommendations of those future savings to us. We are under no obligation to implement those. However, if we do, that would be when they would then get a percentage of that savings as their fee. So, there's no money upfront. It's only if we experience actual savings and have money come back to us that we then would be under the obligation to pay them, and we receive this inventory for free. So, I'm recommending that the board allow us to proceed with this company and see if there are savings opportunities within our various telecommunications billings.
Have you ever had a service like this before?
I did. It wasn't with Spyglass, and it was probably six or seven years ago at Newcastle. And we had success with them. We received money back. They paid their fee. We did not receive the inventory piece that Spyglass is offering. They provided references. Terry Miller took Northern Wells. That was one of their references. They had an acceptable experience with them, received money back. They chose not to implement any of the recommendations. I contacted my counterpart and friend, Bob Cottington, up in Richmond. They used them. They received some money back. They've not made any determination on any of the recommendations at this point. So, Terry and I both contacted different school corporations for recommendations on them, and both places were very satisfied. It's a one-time service.
Is it specific to telephone lines?
It's not, it's any of our telecommunications billings that we have. Our web page hosting, they can make recommendation on our internet provider contract. However, they do understand that with our internet provider contract, we're under the state agreement. And that's with the ENA, and there's probably not going to be any savings there. So, they'll probably just take a pass on even looking at that. The largest opportunity will be in the phone line and potentially the handful of cell phones that we have.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, what is your pleasure, board?
Mr. President, I recommend we approve an agreement with Spyglass.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the item is the School Board Meeting Calendar for two thousand and thirteen. Dr. Hodges?
Board, I've given you a proposed list of meeting dates for two thousand and thirteen. Essentially, it's the second Tuesday of every month. On this, we are suggesting that we take the show on the road three times. Actually, there's only two left of January. We are here at Grandview in May. We will be at the Career Center. And then next November, we'd be at Eastview Elementary School. It was desire of the board several years ago that we would take our show on the road, that we take tours of the building and do those things. If that's not your pleasure, we don't have to do that. If we want to do more than those, we can do that. It's totally up to you what you want to do. Your action this evening, approving this, will allow us to send this to the various media outlets that have asked for information as to when our meetings are going to be held and where they're going to be in different kinds of times. But essentially, it's, except for some budget things, it's essentially the second Tuesday of every month, with the meeting starting at six-thirty, with the exception of February, when we do staff evaluations. We start with an executive session, then at five o'clock.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have a question about the School Board Show on the Road. When that happens, do we, do we just tell the buildings we're coming, or are we invited? How does that work?
They are so thrilled for us. We have, we have about a three-year rotation worked out, both with kitchen cabinet and with, with the School Board Meeting, so that I don't think a building hosts a kitchen cabinet meeting the same year they host a School Board meeting. It is more work for the building principals. I do want to talk to you about, I know we have some mobility issues with some board members, but I do know that they do go to extra effort to make sure that we have a meaningful tour. And if that isn't something we're going to be able to take advantage of, I'd like to know that ahead of time. The thought was that it's, it's nice for the board to get out and see our building, so you have an understanding of what we have. It is more work for a building principals. I don't know if they're willing to speak up in public, but I'll be happy to survey them and let them know. I think once it's over, they really appreciate the fact that you come and show interest in their buildings. A little nerve wracking getting ready for it, but. We didn't, when we first, when we first started this, there was a lot of competition as to who could feed us better. And I did, well, I did, I finally had to say, sometimes there was so much out there for us, we didn't get a chance to take any tours. And that was really a purpose for us, doing that, but. Yes, sir.
There'll be no election this year.
I was going to say, I don't think.
There's no election this year.
I didn't think there would be an election this year. Typically, we do, Cindy does a real nice job of checking the calendar.
And it's the first Tuesday following the first Monday, so this would be after that anyhow. But there isn't one this year. They always take the year off after presidential elections.
Okay, board, what's your thoughts?
I wondered if we could explore the possibility of, when you're talking to the polling, the building principals, the idea of if we should change the format of that.
If it be your pleasure to approve the dates, we can, we can do some, get some background information, ensure that we're happy to do that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, Dr. Hodges. Mr. President, I recommend that we approve the two thousand and thirteen School Board Meeting Calendar as submitted. submitted.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Lori? All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is State of Schools, Dr. Hodges.
When we do take the show on the road, it's not just the building principals. There is some extra effort that goes into getting everything here, getting everything set up, TV. And it's always an adventure because I'm never quite sure what the sun's going to be when we get here, so if you'll bear with me, I will get things ready here quickly, hopefully. It's always a test to see how much of a risk taker you are. This is my third annual State of the Schools presentation. It was, I was encouraged by the board to do this and I very willingly said I can do that and I've done it. And quite honestly, it's a lot of fun to do because there's a lot of really great news to share. We have a number of people working incredibly hard on behalf of our kids. And it shows in what I'm going to share with you tonight. Now, I don't have to tell you this, you know I speak with my hands and so microphones close by is always an adventure, so. I know you're not going to be able to read all of the numbers and that's really not my intent tonight. I want to show trends. There's some trends that are very exciting. There's some trends that we need to be concerned about. So we'll go through this. One of the things that I like to do is to talk a little bit about who we are. This is a trend, this show is our ADM, our Aggregate Daily Membership. This is how many students are in our school corporation and it goes from about 1996 until current day. And you can see that that's not a real positive trend. Back, the first date that I have on there, I think it's 1996, we had about 4,200 students enrolled. Now kindergarten students count as half, the ADM counts as half. And you can see we're kind of in a decline and then about 2005, we had a little bit of an uptick till about 2008. And then since then, it's been a steady decline. And this year, our ADM is 3,637. It's the lowest that we've ever been. And the concern with that is with funding being tied to student enrollment, that's not a very good cycle for us to be on. The next piece that I want to show, I'm going to see if I can get this maybe in a little bit better focus. This is our free, reduced-priced lunch. And that's a trend that's going upward and that's probably as concerning as the other trend. That's a reflection of what Fayette County is going through at the current time. We've been number one in the state in unemployment for way too long. There's times where we may slip down to three or four, but we have some challenges ahead of us. This year, our free, reduced-price lunch total is almost 64 percent. You can see down at the bottom, the green, that's the reduced price. That's not fluctuated a lot, but the free price, the free piece has gone up significantly. The state is about 48.2, which even at our, is it 14? Yeah, even, oh, look at that. As I said, it's always an adventure. We're going to try something different here and start over. If you look at the first column that we have on the left, that's about where the state average is at this point in time. So you can see that we're significantly above the state average when it comes to free, reduced price lunch. So I bought departmental reports, just kind of giving you an idea how big this operation called Fayette County School Corporation is. An idea how many W-2s that we issued in 2011? Mike, that's right, 1,028. Good job. Now that includes everyone from someone who might be an assistant basketball coach to an assistant, to a substitute secretary, to a board member, to a teacher, to the superintendent, anyone that received a W-2. Over 1,000 people received a W-2 from Fayette County School Corporation, making us the largest employer in Fayette County. Total expended in 2012 across all funds, this is federal dollars, it's grants, it's everything, how much did we spend? It's another really big number, $43 million, over $43 million. So it is a very big operation that employs a lot of people and it does take a lot of resources to make things happen here. Transportation, we transport about 2,400, about 2,500 students daily and you can see that it's approaching half a million students on an annual basis. We drive over 3,000 miles a day, making about 547,000 miles on an annual basis. And this is just bringing kids to school. It's not taking them on field trips, it's not taking them to extracurricular activities. This is just to get students into the building. I'm sure it's the largest transportation system in operation here in Fayette County. Meals served. 3,926 meals were served, are served on a daily basis. On an annual basis, that's over 700,000 meals. But it gets better than that. If that was me, I have no idea what I'd do. We serve 22,000 snacks annually. Now that includes, that's good stuff. It's not people getting hungry. Over 9,000 adult meals were served last year. Remember the talk that we had about our summer lunch program, that how for several years, we've been trying to find ways to serve more kids in the summer? It's a reimbursable program. But we haven't had a lot of success. Shavon Carey decided rather than trying to find ways to get kids into us, why don't we find ways to take the food out to them? And as we talked before, we served almost 12,000 lunches that way. Total in the summer was over 35,000 lunches that we served. That includes our summer school. The Career Center changed the way that they were running our cosmetology program. They started those students early. There was concern, how are we going to find a way to feed them? We said, we know how to take care of that. And so that's how that number has gotten up to 35,000. When you add up all of the meals and snacks that we've served, we're almost, we're like, we're less than 500 meals away from three-quarters of a million meals served at Fayette County School Corporation. I think that's huge. The next piece is going to talk about finance and I apologize if the numbers don't come through as well as I hoped that they would. I want to first talk about revenue. The green piece is what we receive basically from the state. That is our regular funding that we can kind of count on. The other is kind of a rust color. I was going to put red, but red with finance isn't necessarily a good thing, so I went with a different color. Those are federal stimulus dollars. And this scale up at the top, it's $27 million. And this is general fund only and you can kind of see how we've operated on. You might say with decline in enrollment, how can we look at those last years, 2011 and '12 and look at revenue being so close together on that? In that revenue, it actually is down 80,000 over the previous year, but part of that, if you remember, there was fully funding of the kindergarten grants. Remember, that's kindergarten grants. I'll come back to that later. But the fully funding of the kindergarten grant was over $300,000. So that was additional revenue in 2012 that we didn't have in 2011. Here's the expenditure of those funds. And you can see in 2012, that number looks like we spent significantly less in 2012 than we did in 2011. And we have, but this doesn't necessarily tell the whole story. If you recall, when we talked, when we settled with teachers and we have the compensation package that we have with them, normally, there was incremental raise that would have been given at the start of the year. We didn't do that. We're working on a different system. At the end of the school year, we'll be awarding teachers dollars. That's not in that, so that's understated a little bit. As you recall, when we did, we had hiring this year, especially in the certified staff. We looked for folks with no experience and we didn't replace everybody. So we have a less experienced staff. It's a smaller staff and so there's savings that comes from that. And then there's also some bills that we normally pay in December that we didn't pay in December and some of those are rather significant. For example, the amount of money that we owed to the Career Center is in excess of $200,000. So it looks less. That was the goal, that we tried to work on our expenditure side. It's a little understated on that slide, but it gives you an idea of where we're at. We're trying to be good stewards of the dollars that we have to work with. This next slide talks about what's the relationship of salary and benefits to the overall expenditure in the general fund. And as you can see, our total expenditure in salary, which is the red bar, the fringe benefits are the green bar that lays on top of that. Total out of our general fund budget is 90 percent of our budget goes to salary and fringe benefits. Now that's important to remember when we talk about where do we make reductions? When we have to talk about how do we make sure that we continue to live within our means, we don't have a lot of discretionary, what I'll call discretionary dollars because so much of it is tied up in people. The other thing that I think is really interesting about this trend, when you go back to 2005, fringe benefits were about 15 percent. They're now 25 percent. So that's growing as we go through. Back, when I took my first school finance classes and talked about budgets and what's a healthy budget, where should you be? And we talked about salary and fringe benefit-wise, where should your budget be? And at that time, point in time, we were told about 80 percent and we're at 90 percent. That's just the way it is. Let's talk about some fun stuff. I don't want to talk about the money stuff. We need to talk about that. Let's talk about some things that I think are really exciting and are a reflection of the quality of people that we have working for Fayette County School Corporation. If you recall, we have what we call a stretch goal that says 80 percent of all students tested will meet or exceed the state standards in ISTEAP Plus. How are we doing? This is just phenomenal. You can't read the numbers, but you just look at the lines. The red lines are Fayette County schools. The blue line is the state of Indiana. And you can see over the last seven testing cycles in ISTEAP, we've been above the state. We've outperformed the state. That's exciting. In math achievement this last year, we were at 84 percent. The state was at 81 percent. When I first put this, started putting this slide up, I think it capped out at 80 percent. Last year, I had to move that up to 85 percent. I'm really looking forward to when we have to push that up to 90 or above. English language arts, we took a step back just a bit, but there again, we're still performing better than the state. We're at 83 percent. That exceeds the 80 percent that we set as a goal. 83 percent for Fayette County School Corporation, 79 percent for the state of Indiana. This is a chart that I didn't use to show. I think I showed it for the first time last year. We really didn't look at students, the percentage of students that passed both the math and the English language arts. That's a higher standard than just passing the math alone. Some students pass math, but not the English language arts and vice versa. We are at 76 percent passing both at this point in time and the state's at 72 percent. We're closing in on that 80 percent. When you think about the challenges that this community faces, when you think about the challenges families have and what our students deal with and you look at their success, it's phenomenal. And it's a credit to the dedicated people, our teachers, our administrative staff, our support staff, everybody who worked so hard with these students to feed them, to keep them safe and to work with them on their academics and help them achieve all that they can do. Should really be proud. I thought maybe another way to state this is I took our achievement from where we were when I got here. I got here in September of 2006 and we started talking about the stretch goal thing of 80 percent and this tells you where we were at, English language arts-wise, math-wise and passing both. And I have had someone share with me, you know, over the last couple of years, what achievement has been more where we, well, we're not satisfied, but the gains that we've made, they said, you know, when you started talking about 80 percent, you kind of thought you were nuts. The red line is the 80 percent. You can see how far away we were from that. Here's where we are in 2012. The orangish-looking red lines that we have show you how we've done on that 80 percent. What phenomenal growth in a relatively short period of time. As mentioned earlier, the A to F accountability measures, different standards this year than what they were last year. We've put the letter grades up there from last year. We had three Cs. Everybody else was an A last year. This year, we had four As, was it three Bs, a C and a D. We celebrate the As. We celebrate the work that has been done. And it does show us some areas and some opportunities where maybe we can do better. Not maybe, but where we do need to do better and we'll talk about that here in just a little bit. I have talked about, I think, mentioned the fact that we're pleased with those results, but we're not satisfied. Here's the part that it gets really cool. The state has identified what they call reward schools. There's 31 reward schools in the entire state of Indiana, just 31 of them, just 31 of them. And we have one. Fayette Central Elementary School is known as a reward school. What does it take to be a reward school? Well, here's what they did. Their pass rate in English language arts was at 92.3 percent. They receive bonus points for high growth in the bottom 25 percent and high growth in the top 75 percent. Back a couple of months ago, I went over all that, all the grades and how all of that came about, but they earned all the bonus points that one could earn. And when we look at their mathematics, they're at 90 percent pass rate in mathematics and there again, they received all the bonus points they could for high growth, not typical growth, but high growth. Almost one-half of the students at Fayette Central Elementary School last year, grades four, five and six, almost half of them showed high growth in English language arts. That's outstanding. But it gets better. Over 50 percent, over half of the students in those same grades showed high growth in mathematics. Kay and her staff are really to be commended for that. We had a stretch goal that said students will read at grade level before they leave third grade. I've shared with you that the state finally figured out that was a good thing to do and they came up with I read and they stole my idea. And so this year, I have a number to share with you where in the past, we kind of had to figure out how we were going to make it work. First time that we gave the assessment last spring, 84 percent of our students passed that test. Across the state, it was 84.3. So I could stand here today and tell you, if I round off or I truncate that number, we're right at the state average. The reality is, we're just a tick below that. I could tell you that after summer school and the good work that we did, our pass rate was at 88 percent. Now, the reality is, it's 84. And we didn't know where it was going to be going into that, but I have every confidence that when it comes around again, that we will do better than that. I found this really interesting. I read this over Christmas break where Tony Bennett, you remember him? He was the state superintendent of public instruction. Tony Bennett recently reported that fewer than 4 percent, fewer than 4 percent of Indiana third graders were not reading at grade level. He factored out special education. He factored out non-native English speakers and you get down to those other students and it's 4 percent. The 4 percent's 4 percent. But when you think about all we've gone through and all we've put teachers through and all these heavy-handed measures that we had out there, the 4 percent, that, I'll let you form your own conclusions. And I'll move on before I say something I'll regret. Students will be competent in math standards before they leave fourth grade. That's been one of our stretch. That's been one of our stretch goals and here again, Fayette County School Corporation is in the red and the state's in the blue. And you can see that both of us from about, when you go back to 2006, 2007, we were in a bit of a decline, but the last two years we have exceeded the state. This year, our fourth graders, pass rate in fourth grade math, 80.4%. The state's at 79.1%. I think it's important to point out that these are not cohorts. These are separate set of kids. Fourth grade classroom, it's not tracking longitudinal data on individual students, just on classroom. Last year we were at 81%. Looks on the chart, it looks like a huge drop off. It's a slight drop off, not really significant. Every student will make at least one year's progress every year. Now before I get to that, we need to talk about what average is because I'm going to show you, talks about average. And so I want you to look at this set of numbers, okay? And while I get a drink of water, I want you to tell me what the average of those nine And I will tell you the answer. Well, what if I told you the average was 13? It could be. It all depends on what we look at. There's three different averages, the mean, the median and the mode. The mean is what we typically think of when we think about average. You add them all up, there's nine of them, you divide by nine, you come up with 15. 15's not in that set of numbers, but that's the average when you use the mean. When you use the median, if you remember when I talked last year about the median, you take all the numbers, you take them from the lowest to the highest and then you count down and you find what's in the exact middle of that. And with that set of numbers, the median is 14. Now there's also a thing called the mode. The mode means the number that shows up most often. In this case, the mode is 13. So when people talk to you about averages, sometimes we need to listen very closely as to what method they're using to come up with that average. So that brings us to the growth model that the state of Indiana is currently using and where we're at. The averages that this model uses is the median. So it's that number that's in the middle. You can have some students that are way up, way out on either end of the spectrum, but it brings you back to what's the number that's right in the middle. What's the significance of this chart? Well, what this says is the yellow line that you see going across there tells us that's where the state performance was in mathematics and that's around, what did I tell you before? It's around 80%? 81%. The line down the middle is the median line. And so it divides that graph into four different quadrants. And so on a growth model, where you want to be is to the right of the vertical line and above the horizontal line. Up in that upper quadrant up there, that means that you're showing high growth, okay? That's our goal. And the blue dot is Fayette County School Corporation and it shows that we're in the appropriate quadrant. That's where we want to be. In the mathematics, it's not as dramatic as what I want to show you in English Language Arts to let you know that we just can't be complacent. And I'm going to try to use this pointer without advancing things. What I've done, the state talks in terms of low growth, typical growth and high growth. Typical and high, we meet our goal of one year's progress every year. It's a statistical model that they have and along the bottom, this is about 33% and this is about 66%. And so if we draw lines along those points, you've identified what is known as typical growth. Students who fall in here, schools that fall in here demonstrating low growth, this is typical growth and this is high growth over here. You can, and these dots that we have, these are all of our schools, okay? So if we were live online, I could click on this dot here and I could tell you which school that was and I could tell you a lot about their performance. Now based upon what I just told you about our reward school, I will tell you that this dot over here, when you have over half of your kids showing high growth, that's where your school's going to be. This is English Language Arts. And again, that's whatever color that is, that orangish-yellowish dot, that's Fayette County School Corporation. When we look at how our schools performed, as I said, we outperformed the state. We're proud of our achievement. We did take a little bit of a step backwards on our pass rate. And so when you look at this, here's the state median and you can see that we have several schools that are just to the left of that. Still in the typical growth area, but it is something that tells us that maybe there's an area, there's some things in here that we need to be concerned with. I've put together a couple stacked bar graphs for you to look at and there again, the colors or the numbers don't come through as well as I would like for them to do. This is a statistical model that's based upon mean scores. Now I've heard several presentations by a gentleman by the name of Dale Chu and I would like to tell you that his presentation is always consistent. It is not. It makes it very hard to interpret exactly what this model tells us. Early on when he was presenting this, he said the model was designed that a third of your students will always show low growth. A third of your students will always show low growth. That's concerning because a true growth model, you would think that everybody would have potential to show typical or high growth. The last time I heard him talk, he said that is possible, but as I look at the data, I'm not convinced that it is. So what I'm showing you is how we've done fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade in mathematics. The red bar is low growth, the green is typical growth and the blue is high growth. And so as you look at the high growth in, was it sixth grade and eighth grade, we're up around 46%. Anytime you get above that 33% in that category, that's something to celebrate. So we're doing a good job there. When you look at seventh grade, you can see that that red bar is a little larger. And what causes us a little bit more concern as we look at that, if we go back and look at the chart from last year, that was also our largest area of low growth. I think there are some things that we need to take a look at to see if we have a better understanding of why our students might be not performing as well as some of our other grade lines. English Language Arts, there again, when you look at the sixth grade, that particular bar in low growth is higher than the 33%. Something for us to take a look at and be concerned about, but I don't want to dwell on the negative. I want to look at the positive and look at how well we're doing on the typical and high Conshigle High School will have a graduation rate that exceeds the state average and a dropout rate that is below the state average. And I wish I could show you new data tonight. The 2012 information is not out there yet. Now think about that. This is January, okay? We handed out diplomas in June. And what is really concerning about this is when you think about the need for a quick turnaround on data as it relates to compensation packages, we cannot deal with this kind of a delay. That's not fair to anyone. As you can see, our high school graduation rate, we're the red bar, state's the blue bar, you can see that we're heading in the right direction. In 2011, for the first time, we got over 80% under the new models that we're using now. There's some old models if things were different, but that's the model that we've been using consistently through there. We're below the state, but we are over 80% and we're headed in the right direction. The short bars down below are the dropout rates. And you look at the state, we are doing better than the state when it comes to dropouts. The state was at 6.1% and we were at 3%. For your mathematicians, you say, wait a minute, those two numbers don't equal 100% and they don't because what's not reported there are things like completion, students who are still in school, GEDs, some of those things are not embedded in there. We look at graduation rate and dropout rate. So what's it had for Fayette County School Corporation? Don't know that you can read this cartoon, but it said, so then I said, why forge my parent's signature when I can create a whole new report card? For those of us that used to carry report cards home and try to find a way to get mom and dad to sign that without a lot of conversation, you know, there were some students, as a teacher, I will tell you that I did look at report cards that came back and looked at handwriting to see if students were true to the task that they were given. We are moving away from report cards that require signatures. We're going online. With Harmony, we do have what we call a parent portal. It's now up. I'm not sure that parents can access that yet, but they soon will be able to do that. And when they can't access that portal, they'll be able to get information on their child in regards to their attendance and pretty much up to the minute reports on where they're at grade wise. We're excited about that. We think that's going to be a great communication tool. That parent portal is for secondary, middle school and high school. We're not there for elementary yet. We're going to let the high school and middle school be the pilot for us as we go through. More and more of the assessments that we are given and that will be required to be given by the state are going to be online. We've got to make gains and advances in technology and we are. We did run a test, I think we ran a test this week or not too long ago to make sure that we were compatible with what the state's expecting, was it for I-Step or some of the online testing and we were. We've spent a lot of time and effort in bringing our schools up to, from T1's to fiber. Board, you've seen this before. I think this is just a way to emphasize the speed with which you increase access to data by going to fiber. It says it's 50 times faster. And to put that into perspective, what Terry told us is that there are over a million words in the Harry Potter series. And with T1's, you can download those million words in 25 seconds. Fiber takes half a second. Significant increase in speed. We did experience, or we have in the past experienced, some issues with online testing with the speed that some of our students have been able to access the data. We're convinced that with the fiber, we're going to make some great gains. This is not my artwork, but you've probably seen this on our website where it says the bipod.com super chat with Dr. Hodges. Monthly, I meet with a gentleman by the name of Gary Puckett and we talk about things that are of interest to Fayette County School Corporation, at least of interest to the superintendent. Try to get the word out about some things that are happening. I say that to say if you have ideas, if you have programs, if you have things that you want to have us talk about and explore, please feel free to send those to me. If you'd like to be a guest, we're more than happy to do that. We record this on a monthly basis. It's updated. All you have to do is go to our website, click on, apply there and it will take you to the most current broadcast. We've been doing it about a year, just an attempt, trying to find a way, another way to get the good news out about what's happening here at Fayette County School Corporation. Indiana Department of Ed, there's been some changes. This is pretty current stuff. Friday, Ralph and I attended the ISBA Winter Workshop and had the opportunity to hear Linda Ritz talk about her legislative agenda. Here's something I thought was kind of neat. It says, "In making decisions, kids are most important." All children, not just some, but all. So personal agendas must be set aside. Who would say something? While your new Superintendent of Public Instruction, Linda Ritz. This is what she believes, this is who she is. Here's some things that she talked about. This was really exciting. It was a group of school board members and superintendents. And she got up and one of the first things she said is, "We will not see new initiatives from her office." Tweaks about what's already there, but when you think about what we've gone through the last two or three years, and I've said it many times, Dr. Bennett had said that when he applied for the Race to the Top Funds, the only difference between Race to the Top and what his agenda was moving forward was how fast we would be able to implement those things. We are so thankful we didn't get Race to the Top because we have tried so hard to keep up with all the things that are happening. It's been a real struggle. Linda Ritz says that's not going to be her agenda and we're excited about that. Some of the organizational changes that she's talking about, she wants to put regional directors out closer to the schools, get them out of Indianapolis and put them in our ed service centers. There's like 10 of them across the state and there'll be a person located there that will get to know the schools in that area, what their needs are, what they're thinking and those kinds of things and really focusing on school improvement and school culture. We talk a lot about Common Core. And as she said, Common Core standards were adopted two years ago. Two years ago, a lot of those standards were still in development. The state of Indiana as well as others adopted Common Core before they were even complete. What she is saying that she wants to have some debate across the state of Indiana to talk about Common Core, especially in the area of mathematics. How is that working? Is that really right for us? There is a bill that's being introduced or will be introduced in the General Assembly to distance Indiana from the Common Core, to do away with that. She doesn't support that, but she does think that there needs to be more conversation on that. And she told us to listen to the debate on January the 16th. That's when this bill is scheduled to be held in the General Assembly to talk about Common Core. A to F accountability. Our model was part of the waiver that the state of Indiana filed with the federal government to get away from some of the requirements of No Child Left Behind. We've talked about some of that. But Linda indicated that the federal requirement is to establish improvement categories, not to label schools. And what we've been in the business of is labeling schools and that's not what the law calls for. And so she wants to get back to that improvement concept, regardless of how good you are, you can get better. And let's focus on getting better rather than focusing on putting punitive grades on schools. Kindergarten. She is in support of fully funding kindergarten. Now be careful here. You'll say, wait a minute, I think I heard the governor and other folks say that we fully funded kindergarten last year. No, what they fully funded was the kindergarten grant, which is less dollars than what we get in ADM for a regular student. Go back to my ADM count that I gave you before, kindergarten students count half. If kindergarten students become part of the funding formula and it's fully funded, then we should see an increase in dollars there. She's not talking about abandoning the college and career readiness emphasis in some areas, but just really emphasizing workforce development and careers. She did talk in terms of, we have a lot of discussion, we have a lot of support to talk about remediation to help students at the lower end of the academic scale. There are some things that we do, you know, you can think here about some of our dual credits, some of those kinds of things. So we talk about our bottom performing, we talk about top performing. Sometimes we don't talk a lot about those kids in the middle and what kind of careers are they going to move into and how do we help prepare them for their careers? Look for that to be a real point of emphasis. This was something that she said and maybe it doesn't fit with everything else that we're talking about. IPLA stands for Indiana Principal Leadership Academy. That was a pretty healthy functioning operation for several years that provided high quality in-service and training for our principals to make sure that they understood what was happening, that they were on the cutting edge and hopefully keep our schools performing. We moved away from that and some of the cuts that were made under the previous administration. She would like to see that brought back in. When she talked about assessments, talked an awful lot about growth. Not the statistical manipulated growth that I talked to you about, the growth model that is currently in place, but true growth. Not so much pass fail, that's really where we're at when it comes to I-Step, when it comes to I-Read 3. And really where the Park assessment is. If you remember a year ago, I spent an awful lot of time talking about Park and that new assessment that's coming in and that's really a pass fail piece and she's not real excited about that. And so look for some changes in our assessment tools. Now stop and think about this for a little bit. If you follow the development of Common Core and the role that Indiana has played in that, we've been right at the forefront of all that. And the Park development, as I understand, there were like seven And the PARK development, as I understand, there were like seven core states that really were driving that whole process, and Indiana was a part of that. And Glenda Ritz is talking about moving away from PARK. That's huge. That's huge. Charter schools. She did talk about charter schools. And she said she wasn't opposed to charter schools, as long as they were local charter schools. Not schools from some big business outside of our state that comes in and takes our state dollars. But if a local school, if the local people think charters are going to better meet the needs of their students, she's all for that. There is an Indiana Charter Board. Be looking to see if that may go away. There again, that's a huge shift in the thinking that has been in place before. I really liked what she said, when she said, "Public money should go to public schools. There should be rigorous accountability for those who receive vouchers." If there's any question as to whether or not Glenda Ritz is a kid advocate and a public school advocate, when you listen to her talk, those questions should go away. That, to me, is refreshing to hear. Developing a culture of readers. She said that everybody should know, and I mean she says everybody, I think she means teachers and administrators within the building, but everyone should know what every student's reading level is, K to 12. She's a literacy person. Look for some changes coming into the I-Read 3 testing piece as well. Let's talk about some local concerns. Talked about a lot of really good stuff that we're doing, some things that we need to be excited about, but I don't want to walk away and be accused of saying, "Well, he ignored some issues that are out there that we really need to be looking at." And one of the ones that we've talked somewhat about, and we've not made the gains that I think we're capable of making, is SAT and ACT scores. When you look at how our students perform, whether you look at all students that take SAT or ACT, you look at our top 25% compared to the state's top 25%, we're underperforming the state in those assessments. I think there's some room for growth that we need to work on. AP performance. When you look at the percentage of our students who take the AP exam and who earn a 3, 4, or 5, which is passing that exam for college credit, well, our results are embarrassing. We're heavily invested in dual credit, and that's a different piece, and that serves a really great purpose. But when we look at our performance in AP, our students aren't making the mark, and we really need to take a look at that and see, and get a better understanding of what's happening there. Student safety and security discussions. That's something that needs to always be on our radar. But then when we have events like happened just a few short weeks ago, it heightens our awareness, and I will tell you, we are having ongoing discussions, but we need to make sure that our students are in a safe, caring environment so that they can perform to the best of their ability. Rise Evaluation and Compensation Models. This is our first year with Rise, and it's our first year with a compensation model. And I talked a little bit earlier in the presentation about the challenges that this new compensation model has created for us. It's a whole new way of thinking. We've reached an agreement. It's a one-year deal. I have shared with several teacher groups in the buildings. If they really want to follow that next year, we can do that, but my expectations will have something different in place. It was the only way that we could find out to bridge us to this new model. But we learned this week of something that may help us in this area, something called the Excellence and Performance Teachers Grant. 120 schools across the state of Indiana applied for this grant. There was $10 million to be distributed. Out of that, the news media was the first one to learn of the selection of those schools. So the information coming to us has not been as easily attainable as what we would like, but we learned the Fayette County School Corporation is one of 40 schools that received money from this Excellence in Teachers, Excellence in Performance Teachers Grant, to the tune of $750,000. We need to say a thank you to Dr. Reek and Dr. Bear, who spent a tremendous amount of time putting this together, getting it all wrapped up, filed on time. We appreciate the teachers' union needed to sign off on that as well. And we're excited. We're excited about getting this grant. What does that all mean? Stay tuned. We'll be rolling more information out to you later on that. I'd like to finish with something that I picked up at national convention last year. They told me who the author of this was, and I looked it up to try to give you some more background. His name was, his was different, so I don't know who to give credit for. It's not for me. But it's a serenity prayer that says, "Grant me the serenity to accept all children who are in our schools. Courage to effect changes to serve them most effectively. And wisdom to select the changes that will make the greatest positive difference." Thank you for the privilege. Serving students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hodges. Is there, are there any questions for board, comments that you'd like to make at this time?
Yes.
I know a lot of work went into that, and we truly appreciate it.
Right, we'll be at some point. Cindy's off, Bill, when she gets back, we'll post that on the webpage, so that if you want to take a look at that, you can maybe take a closer look at some of those. Thank you.
Okay. No questions, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda, public comments. I would remind you that persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and/or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Any public comments? All right. We'll move to the report items, discussion, sorry, superintendents' discussion group Okay. Principals or directors' reports. Director of Personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of items for you. We have, continuing our staff development with our new teachers, we have 12 who are completing their second year of professional development, six elementary and six secondary. They have eight modules. They complete over a two-year period. They've been completing those in January and February. And also, we have 24 new teachers, 12 elementary and 12 secondary, that are completing their first year of classes again in January and February. That's 36 teachers that are being instructed by our teachers, who have a lot of expertise in certain areas, to continue this growth that Dr. Hodges just referred to in his State of the Corporation address this evening. We're excited about that, excited about the opportunities to continue to guide, support our teachers, and continue to do great things in the classroom. And with that also, just to remind you on your board calendar that adopted, next month we'll be reviewing reports from our principals on the progress of our teachers, our first and second year teachers, and there'll be more information that Dr. Hodges will be providing for you later on, that that will be part of the February executive session. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Burchett. Thank you.
Okay. Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I have just a few items this evening. I wanted to let the board know that the new freezer and cooler at the high school are, have been installed over Christmas vacation, are now in operation, and we're hoping these last another 50 years like the last one did. I've been in contact with Wayne Hudson, our representative from the local government, Department of Local Government Finance this week, and we worked on the finishing touches for our budget. So we're expecting our 1782 notice within the next week or so. Very minor changes only to capital projects, which we knew we probably would have to make adjustments to that, not having the specific assessed valuation to work with. So hopefully, by February, we'll have the order and all of the details that I can share with you, where we're ending up on our 2013 budget approval. This week, Bob and I began having conversations about the summer projects that one will need to be doing, indoor spring break. If you remember, last year, we deferred the locker project at the high school. Until this year, it was a part of the capital projects, but there was concern about whether we could get those lockers in and installed in time. So hopefully, within the next month or two, we will be bringing a request to advertise for competitive quotes for many of those items on the summer projects list. And the final item I have this evening is, because we have a new and a returning board member, and as a refresher, Dr. Hodges asked me to give a brief dine tour of the accounts payable voucher list that you receive each month, and kind of reflect on what each of the columns mean. Some of them are fairly self-explanatory. The date, the date of the payment, between board. If there's a yes in that column, that means it's a payment that's been made between the board meetings. Those are generally payrolls, taxes, utilities, contracts, that have already been pre-approved by the board for us to process to avoid any interest or penalties that might be due by not paying them. The third column is the voucher number. This is the number that's assigned by the computer system, identifying that specific voucher. The vendor number is an identifying number for each vendor within our system. So if I need to see all of the payments that we've made to CEI corporations in a year's time, or over the past two years, I could quickly call up that vendor number and we can look at that history. The vendor name has been listed. Many times, it'll be a funny name. For example, in the comments at your place tonight, Billy Hurst. He does business as Hurst Exterminating. On the claims list, it shows as Billy Hurst. There's a second line on his check that says DVA, Hurst Exterminating. All the prints on the voucher register for you is the Billy Hurst. The fund number, this is an identifier of which fund is paying the funds. The best reference for that, if you have any questions, is to flip to about the third page from the back, where it totals each one of the claims for that fund. It puts the fund number and it shows the fund name. As a reference, any fund $40,000 or larger is a fund of federal dollars that we are receiving through our grant process. The fund amount is the amount that is being charged to each fund. So you may see a vendor's name listed with Fund 010 and amount beside it, and then below it, no vendor name, but Fund 1400 with an amount. That means we're paying that same vendor from Fund 0100 an amount, and Fund 1400, which is the career programs, an amount. Trash Service is an example of that. Some comes from the generals' fund, some comes from the career programs. So you will see those separate funds and the amount being charged to each fund on a separate line. There's then a total voucher amount. That shows the total that we are paying that vendor. So that adds up all of those funds that are being charged for that one specific vendor and saying, "How much are we writing that check for?" The check number then is pre-assigned by the system. Those checks, unless they're pre-written, have not been released. They are prepared for release for tomorrow. So if there's ever a claim that's voided off of the list for non-board approval, we then void that check. The bank number is listed. Bank 019 refers to our general operating account. It's not a payroll account or anything like that. This is our main source specific. The memorandum column is very brief, many times too brief. And that's why you received a list of some claims at your desk this evening at your places with further explanation. We can't always put a full description in there with the limited space that we have. So if you ever have any questions, don't hesitate to call me. If you have a question, generally someone else might be having the same question. That's why I prepare the list and accumulate all of the claim questions I've received, and then we put that at your place, so you can review it before you actually vote on the claims approval. And that's all I have, Mr. Burchett.
Thank you.
Could I add one more thing to that? If you go near the end of the claim docket, you'll have a list of funds. If you want to know how much money we spent out of each fund, it's listed for you here. You can go check.
That's why I noted was the third page from the back. It's always the third page from the back shows that, with the amount and fund name and fund number.
And no one leaves the room until you've signed several papers for secretary. This being noted.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent's Report?
Thank you, President Burchett. I just wanted to welcome Mr. Spurlock to the school board. And also, I just wanted to do just a brief word. We are at mid-year, and with all our efforts with the Rise Evaluation System, and just kind of an update report, and going through mid-year reviews, and still going through the principals' mid-year review at this time, I was very impressed with the efforts of our teachers and our administrators, and following the fidelity of the model. And we're already benefiting from our added information and the work that we're going to do, and we are doing, to prove student party. So everything you've heard about Rise, I've seen a lot of positives come out of the information gathered and the work that we're progressing, and just compliment the teachers and administrators because they are doing a tremendous job of the fidelity of that model and the whole evaluation process.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendents' Report?
Welcome, Colonel, and Board. When I said, "No one leaves," I just meant board. At your place this evening, there should be a paper that talks about committee assignments. These are superintendent committees, they're not board committees. I will appoint them, but I want to know what committees you would like to serve on, so if you could sign up for two or three committees, either in a Friday letter or next board meeting, I'll share with you what committee assignment that you'll have for the coming year. Is that anything that's over there?
Okay, going to do the, for the good of the cause, just a little bit different in the fact, does any one, any board member want to speak for the good of the cause, instead of calling on you individually?
I'd like to thank those grandparents that donated $50,000 to Fayette Central.
The Resource Center. All I can say, she's just kind of a little ball of fire, is what she was. She was excellent. I would go by there, and she would always be out there doing all kinds of things. So she was really on top of everything there. So I want to congratulate her in her retirement. And I want to thank Alyssa and Sarah for their tour of this wonderful building tonight, Grandview. They were very informative, and it's a very nice school, and you should be very proud of it. And I want to thank Catherine for her warm welcome tonight. So, thank you.
I too would like to welcome Colonel, and also thank Mr. Paul for his consideration for a lot of our schools, and hope they have very good deals. Also, I mean, we, as a school corporation, we've heard from the last report, support the recipient community. We have several donations that we've donated tonight, and I think sometimes we should never take those for granted. We pay college, we do receive. For this one program, Cool, along with the art program. And lastly, Dr. Lee and Dr. Bear.
Anyone else? I would just like to say that I really enjoyed hearing our state superintendent, Glenda Ritz, the other day, along with Dr. Hodges, and still his words. It was certainly refreshing. So that's different from what we've been hearing in the past. Any final words? Any final word? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We are adjourned.